Good evening. I would like to call to order the Monday, May 11th, 2020, C of Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting being held by a video conference to order. If you'd like to join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like Karen Fendora, the Commission Liaison, to call the roll.
Okay. Planning Commissioner Veal.
Commissioner Laquisha Veal, present.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, present.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, present.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, present.
Commissioner Casey.
Commissioner Scott Casey, present.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, present.
Commissioner Billups. Commissioner Ken Billups, unmute by clicking your audio.
Karen, you were muted.
Thank you. Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, here.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Commissioner Jackie Fairbanks, present.
And Chair Graham.
Chairman Travis Graham, present.
Do we have Commissioner Sanderson?
Yeah. Commissioner Chad Sanderson is here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Okay. That's all the Commissioners that are present. Also present this evening are Mayor Pro Tim Ron Fowler, Mike Mallon, Acting Director of Community Development, Matt Wright, Acting Assistant Director of Community Development, Nathan Jury, our Senior Planner, Adam Hilgadick, City Engineer, Jackie Summer, City Attorney, and Jim Leacock, our Public Stenographer.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fendora. We do have a public hearing this evening, so I am going to run through the procedures before I go through the agenda. I will open the public hearing. I will call for exhibits from the City Attorney. Staff will make the presentation for the city. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make their presentation. I will then ask for witnesses to speak in favor. I will then ask for witnesses to speak in opposition. If you would like to speak in favor or opposition and you're using a cellphone, phone, or a landline, please click star six on your keypad to unmute yourself and be recognized. Once we've heard all testimony, I will get questions and general discussion among the Commissioners. Then I will close the public hearing, and the Commission will consider the facts and approve or deny the request. So tonight's agenda consists of Item One, the Consent Agenda; Item Two, Preliminary Platte with Alternative Development Standards for RGH Red Development; Item Three is a Planned Residential Overlay Final Plan for Eagles Ridge Villas PRO Third Platte; Item Four is the Final Platte for Eagles Ridge Villas PRO Third Platte; Item Five will be a Capital Improvements Program Presentation; Item Six, Other Business; and then Item Seven will be Adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
At this time, Chair, I would like to recognize Ken Billups.
Commissioner Ken Billups.
Here, this is Commissioner Ken Billups. I move to approve the minutes from the Consent Agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
And Chair, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Fairbanks.
I second that motion.
All right. I have a motion for approval from Commissioner Billups, a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. This will be a roll call vote.
And Commissioners, please remember to unmute your audio now and state your first and last name. Commissioner Kradoff. Commissioner Kradoff, just click star six to unmute. We'll go to the next one. Commissioner Veal.
Commissioner Laquisha Veal, aye.
Commissioner Casey.
Commissioner Scott Casey, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Lynn Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Ken Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Commissioner Jackie Fairbanks, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Byron Kradoff, aye.
And Chair Graham.
Chairman Travis Graham, aye.
Okay. That motion is carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. This brings us to Item Two, which is the Preliminary Platte with Alternative Development Standards for RGH Red Development. I'm going to open the public hearing and call for exhibits from our City Attorney, Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer into the record the following exhibits. Exhibit One, staff report with attachments; two, application with attachments; three, affidavit publication in the examiner on April 25, 2020; four, 185-foot notification map; five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site; six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners; seven, Title IV Land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference; and eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Summer. Mr. Jury is going to make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Graham. Planning Commissioners, before you today, I will share my screen to show the property in question. The applicant, Lee Reihardt, on behalf of the property owner, RGH Land LLC, Rich Hoffman, with that are asking for, requesting the approval of a preliminary platte with alternative development standards for the RGH redevelopment. This property is located between I-70 to the north, northwest-south outer road to the south, and it's addressed at 2401 through 2701 South Outer Road. It's about 1,500 feet west of North 22nd Street, about 5.69 acres in size, and they are actually proposing to subdivide this into four separate properties. The zoning on this is currently RC across the entire preliminary platte site. There is a mixture of existing buildings and undeveloped land, so the two proposed middle lots are existing buildings that the developer is looking at redeveloping and repurposing. The two outside lots, lots three and four on the outside, are undeveloped currently, and there is no known plan for that with the developer. The developer does desire to move forward with lots one and two as Phase One in the near future. There is no timeline for the outside two lots, lots three and four. The applicant is, a couple of the bigger items on this, the applicant is, as I zoom in here, requesting to vacate, and this will be through a separate public hearing and application. They are proposing that they will vacate this right-of-way in the future along South Outer where there's a little bit of a butt, a jut out, where rather than having a jut out where it is currently, they are proposing that the property line follows the curve of the road to make it, provide themselves with a little bit more property and make it a little bit more synonymous with the road. They are also asking for alternative development standard to the open space requirement. The existing, or the UDC requires any development of five acres or larger, which this is a little bit over five acres, any development with five acres or more is required to provide open space. And since this is Zone RC, regional commercial, that zoning district is required to provide 12% open space. Due to the location between I-70 and South Outer, open space is not necessarily needed. There aren't too many people that'll probably walk across South Outer to use open space in this location. So staff does believe that the open space requirement does not create any significant public benefit due to the location and does support that request. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a Chapter 353 tax abatement incentives for the proposed project, but I will mention that those incentives are not reviewed by Planning Commission, they are reviewed by City Council, and the Planning Commission does not take, should not take any financial incentives or anything, how a project is paid for into consideration. They should just look at the merits of the development and how it meets code. So in all, the proposed development does meet everything in the code except for that alternative development standard that they are requesting. A couple of things that I'll note is that the actual development is looking at doing Phase One as lots one and two, but Public Works is requesting that they build their half of the road, all of their road improvements on their north half of South Outer Road, that they build all of those prior to the occupancy of the first building occupied. So they are required to build half-road improvements on their half of the road, the north half, abutting their property on lots one through four, and typically, we do require this to be built prior to final platte approval. On commercial lots, we do, Public Works has the discretion to push that off into occupancy, but since this is more than just the one lot, commercial lot, that we've done that in the past, we do want all those public improvements to be done prior to occupancy on the first building. That way, if any other buildings are sold off, or any other properties are sold off, the public improvements are already completed. There are sidewalks that will be required along all four lots, but that is a public improvement that is not necessarily required prior to occupancy of the first building, but just as each lot develops. So each lot will be required to build their portion of the public sidewalk as it abuts their property. Another thing I'll note is the lot size does meet all the minimums, but since this is a, an existing, or property with existing buildings, any new property lines that they are proposing do need to meet existing setbacks for the existing buildings. And the main one in question would be the one in the middle, and the applicant has provided verification that these buildings are setback and they meet the minimum interior side setbacks for the general commercial building type. The, all the other development standards, building design and site development, those will be required to be brought into conformance as part of the Site Plan Designer View process. So any existing pavement, landscape buffers, they will have to follow UDC requirements on the existing property. There is an existing sign on the property, a pole sign, that has, since this property's been vacant for so long, it has lost its grandfather status and does need to be removed. So that will be one of the conditions, the removal of sign should come down or be brought into conformance with the current code. So in other words, the sign in its current condition cannot stay. It'll either have to be brought to current code or removed in its entirety. With all of that, staff does recommend approval with six conditions, one being that Planning Commission approval is based on representations of the drawings presented, but it does not waive any requirement of the UDC except that the open space be removed, or open space requirement be removed from 12% to zero. The second condition being that the right-of-way must be vacated prior to final platte approval. The, prior to building permit issuance, final platte should be approved and recorded. And then the public improvement requirements are for the, prior to occupancy of whichever lot is developed. First, the road, water sewer do need to be built, and the sidewalk adjacent to the developed lot should be built as each lot develops. So I will take any questions for you today, and staff does recommend approval with six conditions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jury. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for Mr. Jury?
Give me just a minute. Chair, there are no questions in the queue at this time.
All right. Is the applicant with us, Ms. Fendora, to make their presentation?
Yes, sir. We have two presenters. First presenter is Lee Reihardt with Yule Engineering. The second presenter is Joel Markwitt with Architectural Works. Gentlemen, you will need to hit star six on your keypad of your cellphone or landline to unmute yourself. And Mr. Reihardt, we will go ahead and hear your testimony first. You will need to be sworn in by our Public Stenographer.
Mr. Reihardt, are you with us?
Yes.
All right. Welcome. You will need to be sworn in by Mr. Lee Cock.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
All right. And could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Lee Reihardt, and my address is 6009 Maple, Michigan, Kansas.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Mr. Jury did a good job describing the project. I'm, I and Joel are basically here just to answer any questions that you or the staff would have. I think, you know, Mr. Jury did a good job describing the project, and we understand what staff recommends in the conditions, and we are in agreement with them.
All right. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for Mr. Reihardt?
I do not see any at this time in the queue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reihardt.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor?
Does Mr. Markwitt, would he like to speak? The other applicant?
I don't believe he did unless there was questions. Is that correct, Mr. Reihardt?
That is correct, I believe.
All right. Thank you.
So do we have anyone that would like to speak in favor of this?
Hello? Am I on?
Yes. Commissioner Billups, do you have a question? And Joel's, Joel's on. I apologize.
Sorry. Yeah, I was, I was having trouble with my texting here. I've actually got two questions, I believe. One is for the applicant, and one is for Mr. Jury.
Okay.
There is a, maybe they're both for Mr. Jury, I'm not sure. There is a piece of land here that I believe is a right-of-way between lots two and three. And if memory serves me correctly, that was originally to be an extension of Saunders Road to a bridge across I-70 or something like that. Is that also planned to be vacated at some point?
I believe, yeah, between lots two and three, that we're talking about? Okay. Yeah. There, I believe that's actually where old RDMIs used to run prior to, prior to I-70 going through. And whenever I-70 went through, I believe that road went away. South Outer took its place, kind of. So it, it is actually under the possession of RGH, so it has been vacated.
So it's, okay, because on the one map, there's still a gap there, there's a line there.
Yeah, and that's private property owned by RGH. Yeah, I think whenever the county, whenever, or whoever vacated it, whenever they vacated it, they vacated it as a tract, I'm guessing, as its own separate 50-foot right-of-way tract that's been vacated as private property. And I'm not sure how Rich Hoffman came by that piece of ground, but he is under possession of that piece.
Okay. So there's no action that needs to be taken on that?
No. No. Not on that 50-foot wide strip that runs north to south between lots two and three.
Okay. And I also want to just, just clarify for, make sure we're all on the same page as I mentioned. The waiving of the open space requirement does not mean that this lot can be 100% paved or anything like that. It still has the landscaping requirements, it's still going to have green space. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. The, the open space requirement is that the, the developer would have to set aside an open space tract separate from lots one through four, so it would have to be tract A, which would never be able to be developed, so it would have to be about a, oh, around a .7 acre tract to reach the 12% requirement. And in essence, almost all of lot three or lot four, I guess, one of the two would have to be almost completely open space. And so this does not remove any landscape buffer requirements, or any parking setbacks, or any of that nature. Those, those are all in place still in the Site Plan Designer View because those are development standards, not part of the subdivision standards.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Getting back to Ms. Fendora, did we have any witnesses that wanted to speak in favor?
Actually, I think that Commissioner Fairbanks has a question.
Can I, can I get through the witness part of the hearing, and then I'll get back to Commissioners' questions?
Oh, yes, sir. So we are asking for witnesses in favor?
Correct.
Okay. So at this time, anyone that would like to be recognized to speak this evening would need to click star six on their keypad to be unmuted, and then please state your name.
I'm not sure. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, Joel.
Okay. Good. I'm Joel Markwitt. I'm the architect for the developer, been working with him for probably 15 years and maybe six or seven years on this property.
Mr. Markwitt?
Yes.
Could I get you to be sworn in before you start your testimony, please?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Lee Cock will swear you in?
Yes.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And then if I could get you to state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay. I'm Joel Markwitt. My address is 5021 Clark Drive, Roland Park, Kansas.
Thank you.
So anyway, like I said, I've been working with Rich Hoffman, the developer, for some time, and like I said, six or seven years on this property, we've had different interests, and they've come and gone. I was just going to say, I know he's excited about it, and he really wants to develop this, and I know it's been a problem for the city for a long time. So I appreciate you all looking at this, and I appreciate working with Planning Commission. They've been very diligent with us, and anyway, I just appreciate the opportunity to do this, and let us know if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Fendora, any other witnesses that want to speak in favor?
Chair, I do not have any witnesses that would like to speak in favor at this time.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
At this time, I'm, I would ask that anyone that would like to speak in opposition would need to click star six on their cell or landline phone. And please state your name. Chair, I do not have anyone that wants to speak in opposition at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. That gets us back into questions from the Commissioners, and I believe Commissioner Fairbanks had a question?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Graham. Or, Mr. Jury, I'm wondering whether or not there could be a smaller percentage of open space allowed. So that's the first question. The second question is, I'm not clear on the right-of-way vacation, whether or not it's going to be a straight line or a curved line that follows the road. And to the applicant, question on why the property was allowed to decline in value over the number of years that it has been vacant.
I can speak to part of that. Am I still on?
Yes. Mr. Markwitt?
Okay. I can only speak to some of that. The property declining, I'm not sure it's gotten any worse since Mr. Hoffman has owned the property. I know it declined before that to a pretty, well, the state it's in and probably a little worse than it's in. I think he's cleaned up the site some since, but anyway, so I don't think under his ownership it is. I know he's very excited to get it up to date and put a story on top of the West Building and a sloped roof and make it look really nice. So as far as the green space requirement, we don't have those side lots, we don't have tenants who want to occupy those yet, and without knowing how it's going to deter development, I guess we'd prefer not to. I know there's the, the green space to the north is this continuous, very wide, I don't know how, probably 70 feet times the full length of the development is all green space. So we know that adjacent to this, there's tremendous green space.
So Jackie, I can speak to your first two questions. Yeah, the, the open space requirement, and can you repeat the second question, actually? I lost track of that one.
I'd appreciate it if you could just draw a line where the right-of-way to be waived.
Right. Okay. So, yes, the, the open space, the right-of-way line at least, okay, so the right-of-way line is located currently where this dark black line is. If you can see.
Okay. Yeah.
A dark black line, and the dashed line that's curved is where the proposed right-of-way will remain. A dark black line, and the dashed line that's curved is where the, um, proposed right-of-way will remain. And they want to vacate everything between the dark bold line and the dashed line, um, closer to the road, so it'd be that curved line. As far as the open space request to reduce it from twelve to zero, um, if Planning Commission believes that, uh, open space is necessary in this location, um, and they do want to provide, um, some semblance of open space in a tract, um, that is, uh, the, the Planning Commission's prerogative to, to provide a reason behind that. Or if you want to stick to the twelve percent, that's, uh, your prerogative as well. Um, but, uh, staff stance is, open space system requirement, um, requires that there is open space, twelve percent, but it has to be a certain type of open space, um, so the, some of the more common types of open space are like a pocket park, um, a trail system, community garden, um, things like that. And staff just did not believe that, um, any of those really made sense, um, in this location between South Outer and I-70.
Okay, the only thing that I'm thinking is, I was under the impression that one of these structures was going to be projected to be a clip kids' play space. And if it's a kids' play space, a green area seems reasonable to me to have alongside that.
Uh, we do not have control over what use goes in, um, it may very well be a kids' play place, um, or kids' bounce house, or something to that effect. Um, but just because that is what is located now, doesn't mean that it'll always be that use either.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the commissioners?
I do not see any more in the queue at this time.
Okay. Seeing no other questions coming in. I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Chair, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks?
Thank you. Commissioner Graham, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the alternative development standards for RGH redevelopment, PP zero three dash two zero dash seven two seven one, with the six conditions, and also state that I'm very pleased to see something going in there.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Banks, do I have a second?
Commissioner Laquisha Ville would like to second.
All right, I have a question from Commissioner Banks, a second from Commissioner Ville, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kradoff? Commissioners, please unmute all of your audio and state your first and last name. Those of you, um, calling in on the phone, please click star six to unmute yourself. Planning Commissioner Kradoff?
Planning Commissioner Byron Kradoff? Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Commissioner Scott Casey, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Lynn Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Sorry, Commissioner Ken Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Commissioner Chad Sanderson, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry? Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, aye. Commissioner Hose?
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Commissioner Jackie Fairbanks?
Is that an aye, or?
I, I can't decide, can I abstain?
Yes.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ville?
Commissioner Laquisha Ville, aye.
And Chair Graham?
Chairman Travis Graham, aye.
That motion is carried with a vote of ten aye and one abstained.
All right, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Next. If there, this completes all the testimony, we heard on item three, if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so at this time. All right, that will get to item three on the agenda, is the Planned Residential Overlay Final Plan for Eagles Ridge. And we will be hearing that along with item four, the final plat for Eagles Ridge Villas PRO, and then we'll consider them separately. And Mr. Wright is going to make that presentation for us?
Yep, thank you, Chairman Graham, um, and commissioners. Uh, before you this evening is, um, our two requests for a PRO final plan and final plat for Eagles Ridge Villas, um, third plat. This is the third and final phase, um, for the Eagle Ridge, Eagles Ridge Villas development, which is generally located east of, um, the Eagles Ridge Villas first plat and Eagles Ridge Estates second plat. Um, the Villas is predominantly on the south side of Eagles Ridge, um, Drive, uh, which is the duplex portion of the development, and then to the north is the single-family portion, which is Eagles Ridge Estates. The property is zoned, um, TF PRO, two-family planned residential overlay. And again, this is the final phase of the duplex portion of Eagles Ridge. Um, this does cover thirteen point five eight acres, and does include forty-two two-family lots and one common open space tract. Um, the first request, um, before you this evening is the PRO final plan. If I can reload here. All right, um, this final plan is for the development of forty-two two-family lots, which would total, uh, eighty-four dwelling units. Um, the PRO final plan does show, um, the general layout of the subdivision and the approximate locations of building footprints, um, as well as the open space system proposed. Um, the only amenity within this final phase is the extension of the Crushed Rock Trail, uh, which is being extended from the first plat to the southwest. And that Crushed Rock Trail would go through the center of this phase with a connection down to, um, Tennessee Drive, and then a connection up to the north, which would connect into the Eagles Ridge Estates portion of the, um, general trail for the entire Eagles Ridge development. And then there's also landscaping proposed, um, in portions along the trail. Um, landscaping is relatively minimal, though, through the center part of the tract due to the one-hundred-foot overhead power lines, um, which ever G has stated that they want very minimal landscaping, so most of those would be, um, low-line evergreens, um, ornamental trees. Shade trees would be outside of easement here along the east, um, boundaries of the property. Um, the building design is the same, um, style that has been developed in the first two phases. Um, there are four different, um, building elevations, um, all single-story. Um, front setbacks will alternate between, um, thirty feet and thirty-five feet, um, to allow some, um, variation in the, um, streetscape. And then all of the other setbacks, including the side and rear setbacks, will be reviewed for compliance at the time of building permitting. Um, the second application is for the final plat. Um, the final plat does include street extensions from Eagles Ridge Villas first and second plats, which include, um, Carson Drive, Tennessee Drive, um, and Southwest First Street, and then a connection into the single-family portion through Southwest Eagles Ridge Drive. Um, Southwest Tennessee Drive does, um, extend to the east boundary of the property, um, for future connection into the, um, Cambridge Park, um, preliminary plat that was approved, um, earlier this year. Um, as this is the final phase of the Eagles Ridge Villas development, um, all incomplete public improvements, um, open space amenities and landscaping from all three phases must be completed, um, prior to the final plat being submitted to the, um, City Council for approval. Um, additional items, including the sidewalks along the lot frontages, as well as individual lot landscaping, um, will be required to be installed prior to approval of occupancy for each lot. Staff does recommend approval of both the PRO final plan and the final plat, each with five conditions, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Wright?
And I do not see any questions in the queue at this time.
Okay. Is the applicant with us, would they like to make a presentation?
Good evening, this is, uh, Brian Ron of One Thousand Northwest High Point Drive Lee Summit, uh, and I'm here tonight for the applicant.
All right, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Um, is there any questions that I can answer? Um, you know, basically, uh, this, as mentioned, this is the final phase of the Villas there, uh, continuing with what we've done in the previous phases, uh, through this phase, um, the final planning together of the trail amenities, and, uh, then as we transition into the single-family there to the, to the next, um, to the next phase there, so. Uh, this is, as mentioned, I said, just, uh, just the final piece of that.
All right. Are there any questions from any of the commissioners?
I, I do not have.
Ms. Fendora, do we have any questions for the applicant?
At this time, I see no questions in the queue.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion for the final plan.
Chair, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Billups?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Ken Billups, I would like to make a motion to approve the final plan, POF zero two, two zero seven two four four, with the five staff conditions.
All right, thank you, do I have a second?
And at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a second on that same motion.
All right, I have a motion for approval from Commissioner Billups, a second from Commissioner Banks, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioners, please unmute your audio now and state your first and last name. Those of you that are on a cell or landline, please hit star six to unmute. Planning Commissioner Casey?
Planning Commissioner Scott Casey, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Banks?
Aye. Can you hear me?
Yep, I see you now, yep.
Okay.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Billups? Ken, you're muted at this time.
Sorry. Commissioner Ken Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Commissioner Chad Sanderson, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry? Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, aye. Commissioner Hose?
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Commissioner Jackie Fairbanks, aye.
Commissioner Ville?
Commissioner Laquisha Ville, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Commissioner Byron Kradoff, aye.
And Chair Graham?
Chairman Travis Graham, aye.
That motion is carried unanimously.
All right, the final plan was approved, so now I would entertain a motion on, a motion on the final plat.
Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Billups.
Thank you, Commissioner Billups?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Commissioner Ken Billups. I would move for approval of the final plat, PF zero two two zero seven two four five, again with the five staff conditions.
All right, and do I have a second?
Uh, Commissioner Banks?
Thank you, Karen, uh, Chairman Graham, I would like to make a second on the motion.
All right, I have a motion for approval of the final plat from Commissioner Billups, a second from Commissioner Banks, this will be a roll call vote.
And once again, commissioners, I ask that you please unmute all of your audio. Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Peel, aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Commissioner Chad Sanderson, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry? Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, aye. Commissioner Hose?
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Commissioner Jackie Fairbanks, aye.
Commissioner Ville?
Commissioner Laquisha Ville, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Commissioner Byron Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Commissioner Scott Casey, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Lynn Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Commissioner Ken Billups, aye.
And Chair Graham?
Chairman Travis Graham, aye.
And that motion is carried unanimously.
All right, we will send our recommendation for approval to the City Council meeting, which will be Monday, May eighteenth, at six o'clock. Next item on the agenda is the Capital, Capital Improvements Program presentation, and Mr. Mallon is going to make that for us.
Thank you, uh, Chair Graham, um, this is the annual, uh, presentation of the Capital Improvement Program. Um, as with previous years, uh, city staff brings this forward to present to the Planning Commission, uh, ahead of bringing it forward to, uh, in a draft form to the, uh, city planning or the city council. And so I will give you a quick overview of, uh, how, uh, that process went this year. Um, because of the, um, stay-at-home order from Jackson County, and due to the COVID-nineteen, uh, pandemic, uh, there was an abbreviated CIP budget process, uh, I would like to point that out. Even though that this CIP, uh, introduction and budget is being presented, uh, in accordance with the city's charter, our process was a little bit abbreviated this year because, uh, we were unable to, uh, hold, uh, some of the meetings that we needed to, uh, hold. As such, uh, my presentation tonight will actually be a little bit shorter than normal. So the, uh, as with past, um, CIP adoptions, we bring this forward to the Planning Commission to, uh, present the, the ideas and the maintenance of the CIP, Capital Improvement Projects. Uh, this year, uh, we did not, uh, introduce any new projects, um, for the fiscal years, for the next four years. Uh, the fiscal year, or the Capital Improvement Project is a five-year project, uh, or five-year- or five-year fiscal year project program. The, all of the years leading up from 2020 to 2021 through 2023, 2024, all of those numbers have stayed the same. The only thing that is different that is in this capital improvement project is that we have added new numbers for projects for 2024 and 2025. The emphasis continues to be, as it has been in many years past, on the maintenance of existing infrastructure and replacement of mission-critical equipment. The funded projects, again, remain the same through 2023, 2024. And there have been added funded projects through 2024, 2025. In general, the CIP budget is just over a hundred and forty-two million dollars in two, in, in total. Roughly a hundred, a hundred and two of that is in unfunded capital needs. And almost forty million, just under forty million, thirty-nine million, eight hundred and six is in the funded capital project needs. The, the balance, or the, the bulk of that continues to be into the maintenance portions of the city's capital improvement needs. Basically maintaining existing city infrastructure that we have right now and replacement of existing trucks and other capital improvement needs that we need, but also equipment replacement and capital improvement. So, all of the, the years previous, the, the numbers have just been kind of carried forward, if you will. And then we've added numbers for 2024 to 2025. The, the kind of general consensus is that without knowing where our budgetary needs are going to be over the next six months to a year, that the city is taking a very conservative approach. And that we are kind of, if you will, continuing with the, the line items that were approved last year, not improving or approving any new projects. There's some projects that changed amounts due to, you know, the changing marketplace and economy. But all the projects that were previously approved are, are still in the budget. And we have just kind of carried those through as we go forward into the next year. This proposed CIP would be heard by the city council at the May eighteenth city council meeting. And this notice was published in the May second examiner notice. And with that, staff is happy to answer any other questions. Again, I just would like to reiterate that it, it's basically continuing forward the CIP program from last year in terms of the maintenance, the capital replacement and other needs. It's just adding in new funding needs for the 2024 to 2025 year.
All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Mallon?
Chair, I do not see any in queue at this time.
All right. If there are no questions, we will move on to other business. Mr. Mallon, do we have other business?
We, we will likely have other business on May twenty-sixth. So I hope everybody has a great Memorial Day weekend. But we will be in, in session on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. We have at least two items to bring forward to you. And those will be through this team's environment. And we're continuing to work through how to best handle our public meetings. And, and to be able to bring forward cases that, that need the planning commission's approval. But as of right now, we, I believe we only have two or three that will be there on the, on the twenty-sixth. But we do plan on having a meeting that night.
All right. Is there any other business anyone has to bring forward?
Chair, at this time, I would like to recognize Planning Commissioner Fairbanks.
Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks.
Do we have a date when the city hall and city services are going to be open?
I can answer that. At this point, we do not. The city is following the, the Jackson County, eastern Jackson County stay-at-home order and is rolling out a phased approach into how the city hall reopens and the public safety buildings and all of the city facilities reopen. At this point, the plan is for the public safety building, which includes the police station and the courts, I believe will be opening on May eighteenth after the stay-at-home order is lifted on May fifteenth. However, city, city hall and other city facilities will remain to be closed until the city can adapt our facilities enough to be able to handle public interaction. And so we're still trying to work through those details.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Vindor, do we have any other questions or business to bring forward? The commissioners?
No, doesn't look like it at this time.
All right, seeing none, I would move on to item seven, which is adjournment. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I still move. Commissioner Fairbanks?
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
And at this time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Banks.
I would second that motion.
All right, I have a, I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Fairbanks, a second from Commissioner Banks. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ville?
Planning Commissioner Laquisha Ville?
Planning Commissioner Kradoff?
Commissioner Byron Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Commissioner Scott Casey, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Lynn Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Commissioner Ken Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Commissioner Chad Sanderson, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Chairman Graham?
Chairman Graham, aye.
That motion's carried unanimously.
All right. Our meeting is adjourned. I would remind you to please immediately hang up by clicking on the red phone icon. And I wish everyone a good evening.